I have resources to help residents make better lifestyle choices and whereas Healthy West Orange Champions, helping programs to deliver health and wellness activities. And whereas Healthy West Orange Unites Health-Minded Workday for whom a healthy community provides meaningful benefits. And whereas Healthy West Orange Advocates for healthy community decisions and encourages local leaders to keep their communities' health and wellness a top priority. And whereas a Healthy West Orange declares the third Friday in September as the annual West Orange Healthy Selfie Day. Now therefore is my great forever pleasure and privilege as the mayor of the town of Oakland to declare Friday, September twentieth, twenty twenty four as West Orange Healthy Selfie Day. In celebration of the eighth anniversary of Healthy Selfie, I urge all the plans supporting this initiative. So congratulations. Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Bill.
Bill, do you have a group photo with Patty?
Selfie.
Selfie.
The shirts in front of us like always.
Yes.
This is my first time.
Yeah, you just kind of hang it. You get to go on and change. Hey, next one. Is the National Preparedness Month. Sounds like a little tongue twister, that selfie one.
Yeah.
Yeah. National Preparedness Month, whereas the month of September is recognized as National Preparedness Month and celebrate and creates an opportunity for every resident of the town of Oakland to prepare their homes visiting the communities for emergencies and natural disasters. And whereas during an emergency, every second counts. An emergency preparedness program indicates individual or families on how to prepare during, before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these programs address threats of severe weather, terrorism, and other potentially life-threatening circumstances to make our communities better prepared, resilient, and safer. And whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident and all town of Oakland residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all town of Oakland residents are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and become more prepared by making a plan, building a kit, and staying informed. Now therefore, I stand here by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, on behalf of the entire town commission to hereby proclaim September twenty fourth as the National Preparedness Month in the town of Oakland. So be prepared. Next, oh, Labor Day. Everybody's ready for Labor Day Monday coming up. So whereas Labor Day is a time-honored tradition in the United States dedicated to recognizing the invaluable contributions of American workers whose dedication and hard work have built and sustained our nation's economy and prosperity. And whereas the town of Oakland, Florida, is deeply committed to celebrating the achievements of our local workforce, acknowledging the vital role that workers in all industries play in ensuring the continued growth and success of our community. And whereas Labor Day also serves as a reminder of the importance of fair and equitable working conditions, right? Take a safe workplace, and the continued need to advocate for the rights and well-being of all workers. And whereas, the town of Oakland is proud to honor the men and women who contribute tirelessly to the strength, vitality, and well-being of our community and to reflect on the progress made in the pursuit of labor rights and the work that still lies ahead. And whereas, we gather to celebrate this Labor Day. We recognize the diversity, dedication, resilience of our workforce, and we commit to supporting initiatives that promote job creation, fair wages, and opportunities for all. Now therefore, I stand here by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, on behalf of the entire town commission to hereby proclaim, jeez, September second, twenty twenty four, as Labor Day, in the town of Oakland. And I urge all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating the valuable contributions of workers in our community and across our nation. There's three. You guys joking on Monday?
No.
Now, I was sure you're recognizing it as well.
No Labor Day.
Maybe, maybe.
All right, last one. It's the Celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas throughout Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the history and contributions that Hispanic and Latinx Americans have made in the state of Florida. And whereas Florida has the third-largest population of Hispanic people in the nation with more than five million, the first residence within the Sunshine State. And whereas we honor the rich and vibrant traditions of Hispanic and Latinx Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, and the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic Americans have played an important role in the history of Florida from the early days of the pioneer to our current legacy of leaders in international trade, technology, education, aerospace. And whereas Hispanic Floridians have been an integral part of our communities whose contributions happened and spilled as agriculture producers, farmworkers, and growers of wine, pickles, and folks. And whereas, from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, we pay tribute to the dedication and service of Hispanics and Latinx Floridians for their efforts to improve the state of Florida and pave the way for future generations of leaders. Now therefore, I stand here by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, and on behalf of the entire town commission to hereby proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty four, through October fifteen, twenty four, and the town of Oakland as Hispanic Heritage Month. You got it. It's four. No loss for that. I mean, all right. So there you go. You want to ask your cash next? Very nice. All right, so we have a presentation. So hello, Jennifer. How are you? Oakland National Reserve. What's going on?
For those who don't know me, we've done a couple of managing workshops in the past. So, and like I say, it's been worth it. It's been exciting. It's had challenges, good. But the kind of things that have really been fantastic here. So first thing I'd love to highlight are visitor numbers. Now, as you change stuff a little bit, have they now have an electronic system for groups to check in? The goal is to help us to be able to collect those, you know, in a more easier way instead of having sign and cheat and having our volunteers try to put them in a database and get all the rest. So that being said, our numbers are a little more challenging to decipher this year. But we still believe that our visitor numbers for the year, we're running between thirty and forty thousand visitors for the year, which is pretty consistent with the past. So always very exciting to have that, but we don't have a way to do exact numbers at this time. Field trips and homeschool classes and all of our schools that come to the preserve. This is, to me, kind of the cornerstone of what we'll do, is the education. And this year, we had Montessori, innovative Montessori from Oakland every year. Now, when I say every year, the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classes for Montessori come every Tuesday and every Thursday to the preserve doing a four-class rotation. So it was following times with them, and they had a total of eight hundred and seventy-three education days this year with the Montessori. Oakland Avenue Charter, for those that know Oakland Avenue. Each class comes to the preserve on Wednesday. So we start with the fifth graders, the beginning of the school year, and work all the way down to the kindergartners. And each class has the opportunity to spend an entire class day at the preserve. This year, four hundred and ninety-nine students from the Oakland Charter School visited us. We have our homeschool series, which last year we expanded to sixteen-year-olds, and we had two hundred and eighty-five student days with our homeschool breaks and additional field trips with another four hundred and fifty-six students coming out. So we're looking at over two thousand students that have come out this past year. Then we jump to our summer camps. Now, I thought last year was a little crazy, the summer camp, check-in and registration. This year, we had adults calling us going, what time does registration open? What time does open? We had four of our classes fill up the first day of camp. Now, we only have six classes for the year. So this year, like the past years, we completely filled our summer camps with a total of a hundred and forty-four campers over six weeks, filled to capacity. We had the bat conservancy. We had AVN reconditioning center coming out. We had Orange County History Center. We had beekeepers. We had fossil hunters. You name it. We had them out. And it was really an exciting year. And of course, we participated in the Healthy West Orange Splash Challenge, which is always a lot of fun. Now, we don't focus just on elementary and middle school. We also have other programs, including our Florida Master Naturalist Program, which is a program that was developed through the University of Florida that is an adult continuing education program and certification. And the focus on learning about the different ecosystems in Florida. This year, we had thirty-two that finished those classes. We have lots of scouts that came out for bath work. We had over three thousand people show up for our Nights of the Firefly Bike. Thank you to the Oakland Police Department for helping us with traffic, dealing with that. For Blue Hikes, we had six this year, which are high-end hikes around the state of Florida, around central Florida. Fifty-four participants in six hikes. And we had over a hundred children and adults show up for our story time. They come in, have a wonderful story from our retired teacher and frat bike. Great way to get those preschoolers into the preserve. Our events this year, Nature Fest, we had last September. We have an estimated a thousand visitors that came to our four-hour festival along with thirty-eight vendors and partners that join us. Pumpkin Glow was over two nights this past year with over sixteen hundred visitors. Of course, we participated in the Oakland Heritage Festival, which of course is a just a wonderful, wonderful day to enjoy. And our fours at the preserve, which is the adult-only event, that we had over a hundred and thirty tickets sold this year. We could not do it without our volunteers. We have a small staff, and then we have those that are staff in town that we're able to pull for some assistance if needed. But our volunteers are key to everything that we do. This year, we had a hundred and eighty-nine individuals and fourteen groups that were at the preserve giving over six thousand hours of volunteer. Now, these numbers are important because these numbers help us to get grants. When we are able to show that there is participation, that there is value coming in with our volunteers coming in to help, that's what grant givers like to see. They really do. We had elementary kids all the way through senior adults, and this year, eight Eagle Scout programs were completed on property. Restoration, over a thousand native plants and trees planted. That's what we do, right? East side of the preserve, we had a prescribed burn. And then, starting this next year, we are hoping to shift to a three-year burn cycle that will rotate around the different areas of the preserve. Social media, of course, as usual, is exploding. We now have over ten thousand followers on our Facebook page, which is an eleven percent increase. And you probably were like, ah, you know, something, it's just, right? Well, when you are a nonprofit, social media is huge. That is where we do the majority of our marketing. So the larger our following on social media, the more marketing we are able to do and share. We have lots of page visits. We still have our four-point-seven star rating, which is excellent for social media. We've had an increase on our Instagram page, and we are at three thousand five hundred followers on Instagram. Now, something I found really interesting is on our Facebook page, the majority of the followers are West Orange County. It's Oakland, Oak, Hawe, Windermere, Winter Garden. Instagram, it's Orlando, and it probably has to do with the demographics. Because I hate to say it, Facebook is more of a little bit older, established families. Instagram tends to be more of the twenties and thirties, right? And so it's really interesting. I would see how that has progressed. Lots of projects going on right now. We're working to focus on, hopefully, building up our Riley Farm outdoor education space. And we have requested funding assistance through Orange County to assist us with the build out there. So a little background on that. With the school purchasing the property that's just outside the preserve, they, as a school, have fenced in that property, which is completely understandable. That being said, that has cut down on the space that we had available to us that we used to share that we would have for archery, for overflow parking, for some larger outdoor education spaces. So that's why that Riley Farm location is so important for us to focus on so that we can have those outdoor education spaces. This was our third year for the Youth Climate Project. It's the third year of three. The climate project was focused on high school seniors in West Orange and South Lake County, where they would participate throughout the year putting together a presentation or a panel to buy for some scholarship funds. Over the past three years, we have been able to provide over sixty thousand dollars in scholarship trials for high-studied seniors going off to college. So we were very excited to be able to do that three years of the project. Upcoming events, upcoming events. You can't see the picture very well. It's our twenty-fifth anniversary. Very exciting. And at Nature Fest on September twenty-first, we are going to be highlighting our twenty-fifth anniversary with a very special logo t-shirt that was designed by Allerie Design for us. So we are excited about this fest, even more so than I usually am, to be able to have that celebration time. We have Pumpkin Glow coming up again this year, which is a single night this year, October twenty-fifth, but the hours are extended, so younger can come before dinner, before it gets dark and scary. And the elders, if they want, they can come when it's nice and dark and walking through the woods. And of course, we have the Oakland Heritage Festival, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Before I move on to this one, I want, I have some thank yous. I have some thank yous.
Come on, Jennifer.
I know. First of all, Commissioner McMillan, thank you so much for all of your support working with grant cycles, working with the Florida cities. Really appreciate it. Vice Mayor, your enthusiasm for the town, the school, and the preserve is infectious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, thank you for the time that you've spent with me, talking about the preserve, the preserve's needs, and learning about what we do. Thank you. Commissioner Pollan, he's gonna make me cry. Thank you for your time, your energy, your enthusiasm. It's great. We appreciate it.
We can't thank you. We can't possibly thank you enough.
And Commissioner Ramos is not here, but I want to thank him for his time, his treasures, and his talent, and his just love of the preserve and everything that he has done for us. And for his.
Picture. Don't get a picture.
Yeah.
We are gonna miss you very much.
That being said, we have a managing director transition. I am very, very pleased to be able to introduce Nicola Pryman.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I have been the volunteer and animal care coordinator at the preserve for the past six years, and I am very excited to be able to step into leadership and work with you all to kind of keep pushing the preserve forward, having this amazing resource for the community right here. Thank you, Jennifer, for being an amazing leader for me to follow. And I will finish up our presentation. So looking forward, we of course are very excited for the upcoming year. We've got lots of great events planned and all of our education. But of course, there will be some challenges that we will face. So as Jennifer mentioned, with losing some of that area for our educational activities, we are looking to try to secure some funding to be able to, when we obtain that Riley Farm property, to be able to build out a really nice education space. If we could have some area for archery, have a covered pavilion accessible that could potentially be used for school groups or events if people want to come and have their own events on the property. So that is going to be a big challenge, is to trying to secure that funding. And then, of course, the event parking has become an issue with our events getting bigger and more exciting. We've got a lot of visitors that are wanting to come, and we have a teeny-tiny parking lot. So for example, for Nature Fest, we're expecting about a thousand people to come, and we don't have a huge amount of parking. So trying to figure out some of those challenges with, you know, how we deal with the flow of traffic and parking for some of our events. And I believe that that is all that we have. If you have any comments or questions, welcome back up.
Thank you, guys. Jennifer, we really appreciate you. And, you know, I've always said that the nature of the twenty-five years, I mean, it seems like it was not that long ago. You know, it's one of those tiny little treasures that, you know, even a town resident forgets just right down the street. And every time you go there, there's always something new and different you need to do, which makes you want to go back. So again, thank you for your service, everything. Appreciate it.
And we couldn't do what we do without the town, without the town staff and the town residents. Because if we didn't have the support of the town residents, we would not be able to be successful like we are. So thank you very, very much.
Thanks.
Pride of the Florida League of Cities, several of us already know. They gave a presentation to the Florida League of Cities, including Andy. And it was great. I laughed there. It was a great presentation. And when I got to the Florida League of Cities conference, one of the first persons I sat next to in one of the meetings I was in was one of the commissioners from Montour. And, you know, we're in a group meeting, and we're part of a committee. So my name, you know, where I'm from, I mean, he didn't know. We didn't know each other. So he mentioned the meeting, and he said he was gonna reach out to Andy. So I take Andy, the information, I'm not sure if we reached out to him or not. But when you thank me for supporting, it's easy to support when you've been so blessed and so lucky to have you and all the volunteers to put together products. So all I'm doing is just showing off what we have here as a jewel of the town. And so I want to say thank you, but, and then, of course, we got the award, and everybody was talking to Sal and myself about, you know, about the preserve all over the state. And so you're gonna probably get a lot of people coming just to see what you guys are doing. So be ready for it, but we had a lot of conversation and private conversation and in meetings. And so just want to say, yeah, it speaks to what you do, you know? All we are is just a face and a mouthpiece, but it's easy to share that. But I just want you to know, the Florida League of Cities, even the staff, they are very proud of what we have here in our city, in our town. Just thank you so much.
Thanks. It's been a great seven years. We've come a long way in the last seven years. It might not seem like it, but under Jennifer, everything has gotten a lot more organized. We've made a lot of progress in a lot of things, and it's because of Jennifer, so thank you.
Here's how organized we were in the beginning, Jennifer. In the very, very beginning, we're building this boardwalk. They said, we're gonna go all the way down to the lake with it. And I said, no, 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 we're not. We'll never make it down that far. And we're like, maybe a quarter of the way down, and I'm working with Jack Aiman, and he says, Mike, get down there, and I'm gonna hand you this beam. And I looked at him. I said, Jack, I said, there's not a way in the world. I'm gonna get down in that swamp. I'm the above-ground guy. And he looked at me, and he went, oh, Mike, really? And I went down in it, and I think I must not have been the second person to walk on water. I just popped right out. And I don't, Jack must have laughed for like twenty minutes. I'll never forget that experience that we had building that boardwalk. So the whole thing has been great, but the same way, thank you so much, and good luck to you. You won't need it. We will operate.
Thank you, guys.
Could we get a picture with you guys?
Don't bring that snake up here for the picture.
Not any snakes. Snakes. Picture for him. Right on. Instead of Jennifer.
Public forum.
Oh, public forum. Public forum. Sorry, this is a, I'm gonna be meeting when we open up to anybody in the audience or public that would like to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda. Anybody like to speak? Oh, hello. How are you?
And I actually brought a visual aid if I'm allowed to pass this out.
Thank you, Damon Agnes.
Sarah Meyer. And is there a microphone, or is it just?
Oh, it's your microphone.
We'll do. Sarah Meyer, four zero two East Vic Avenue. I was here a couple months ago expressing some concerns about speeding drivers on the road I live on, which is a dirt road. It's in one of those yellow highlighted roads on the exhibit. And I had requested, you know, to work with the town to maybe get some more signs put up about slow down, children are playing. I invited police department to come out and use my side yard as a place to sit and catch people speeding. I don't know what, if anything, has come of that request that I had a few months ago. I don't see any new signs. I don't know if you guys have ticketed anyone. But about a week and a half ago, my husband almost ran over in the yard. We're in the street in front of our house from the speeding driver. So I'm back here again to ask if we could work together to come up with a plan. There's just a lot of cut-throughs going through there, especially on Vic Avenue, because it's a direct connection between Oakland Park and Tub Street. And then in speaking with the police officers that came to my house about a week and a half ago when I reported the incident, it was brought to our attention that there's no posted speed limits on those yellow dirt roads anywhere. There's some around, which I've labeled. They're about twenty-five or twenty miles an hour. And those are on the paved roads, which have two travel lanes. Some of them have sidewalks. Some of them have curbs. But they're at least a lot bigger than the dirt roads that I live on, that little sort of dirt road niche. So it was told to us that if it's not posted, and it's a local residential road, that the law says it's twenty miles an hour. That's just way too fast for that road, for any of those roads in there. And then furthermore, they cannot ticket or find anyone for going up to five miles an hour over that speed limit. And if I was given wrong information, I do apologize. So they could potentially go twenty-five miles an hour down our road before being pulled over and given a ticket. And that's just extremely dangerous for anyone who lives around there. So my request would be to have a ten mile per hour posted speed limit at the three intersections where the pavement hits the dirt. And that's it. The two ends of Vic and the southern end of Vandemere at the West Orange Trail. That way, if, you know, you have some flexibility to go up to fifteen miles an hour without getting pulled over and getting a ticket. But if you go any faster than that, then it could be a finable effect. The reason I think ten miles an hour is appropriate is because it is a dirt road. It's narrow. There's no sidewalks. Kids, including my own, run around on bikes with fishing poles, soccer balls. There's pets that roam around. And then on top of that, if they're going slow enough, the dust would actually be less. I know that that's a big complaint some people have about the dirt roads is the amount of dust and dirt that gets kicked up from speeders. And then on top of that, we just like the quaint, quiet neighborhood atmosphere that the dirt roads give us. So that would be my justification for the ten miles per hour. So that would be my justification for the 10 miles per hour. On top of that, I've just suggested some, you know, signage down here at the bottom that talks about local traffic only or no cut throughs. More slow down, kids and pets at play. And then you could even, you know, a more historic looking sign that would maybe fit with the character of Oakland, which is the green, slow down. These roads are our sidewalks, which is true for our area. I know that you guys have a Vision Zero plan that was done for the roads in Oakland, and it was very thorough and well done. It does not address dirt roads at all, as far as I can tell. Did not read every word of it, but it did focus more on the major thoroughfares where there are significant statistical data for incidents. So I understand that. I know the green block that, you know, most people use as a guide for traffic situations doesn't address dirt roads either. So I feel like it could just be up to the town on how to handle the situation. Let's see what else. And I also don't mind if there were speed bumps. I don't want to speak for my entire neighbors. They're not here representing themselves. But that's why I would just love to have another chance to meet with the people who make the decisions, have a conversation, see what we could come up with and work together. I have concerns every time my kids go out and play. I'm like, look for cars. Make sure you're looking. So I just want to put that back on the front of your all's minds. And then additionally, there's dump trucks that go up and down Star Street, I'm assuming to Oakland Park, that have just blown through the stop signs, that three-way stop at Vic Avenue and Star Street, right in front of me. And, you know, my kids walk through there. Everybody walks their dogs down Star Street. So that's just another concern. If I'd had the time and I wasn't on my way to work, I would have, you know, tried to follow up with whoever their contractor was. But I wasn't able to do that. I shouldn't have to do that. But I just appreciate you, appreciate your time listening to me tonight. And I have, I know I signed in over there, but I also have my name and number. If I should hand that to anyone in particular, can do that. And then I hope to the fore, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
The people you're seeing speak down the road, is it, I know you said it's cut through traffic, or are you?
Yes, it is. It's not just cut through. And I mean, honestly, I don't know every person that lives in the neighborhood. They could be a resident, but it is delivery trucks. Also, it's Kroger, FedEx, UPS, Amazon. Yes.
That's would be my first.
Yeah, but honestly, the very personal incident we had with my husband was just a, it was not a company. It was a person in their personal vehicle.
Yeah. As far as the dump trucks go, I mean, you know, running out of work every morning if I can, and, you know, the dump trucks should start to diminish because of the, they're moving the dirt that's in Oakland Park.
Right.
Those should be, but there's still, there's no excuse for running those stop signs. I mean, I've seen them not really stop, but they roll through. You know, when they come over, they're just.
This was like.
Kind of going and they're rolling through. But, yeah, so I'm sure the chief will do the stop sign.
One other thing, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Okay. I don't know if this falls in your jurisdiction, but we actually went and looked, brought up the mapping apps to see what it said about our roads in the neighborhood. And these dirt roads are labeled as 30 miles an hour in Google Maps. So I don't know if there's a way to lodge a complaint with Google to get them to update that. Or that might not be your purview, but it's certainly not, it's certainly not helping the situation. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Donna Reed and I live at 100 Vandemere. And I was just thinking about this because I've sat out there many mornings. As Elise knows, I've contacted Mike a few times about the dump trucks, starting at 7:30 in the morning or before, which they're only supposed to start at eight. And when he goes down there and addresses it, it happens. And when, every other day, it doesn't. The dump trucks, in fact, there was a car sitting at the stop sign on Vic this morning, and they just started to pull out when a dump truck, probably going 30, 35 miles an hour, just ride on through it. And all I heard was laying on the horn. So I, I mean, I have videos of these dump trucks just running through it. But that's not the only thing. Right behind the dump trucks are the cars that are flying through these stop signs. I sit every single day and watch the stop sign in front of my house on Vandemere. They don't stop at that. Some of them do a rolling stop. Some of them just don't really care. And they just keep going. The more, and there's the traffic. I know when Oakland Park was starting and they did all the traffic studies, it was, oh, nobody's going to use these roads. They're going to go this way. They're not going to go this way. And we stood up many times, my husband and I stood up here and said, I know you people are professionals at traffic studies, but you're crazy. And they're not even, I mean, they're not even fully residential over there now. They're not even fully living there now, and the traffic is absolutely ridiculous. So, I mean, if I sit out, if I stand out there, they know. I'll stand out there with my phone and they know when I'm standing there and they'll start stopping. And if I walk inside and close my garage door, there they go again. So, I mean, I have videos of these guys just going through the stop sign because they just don't care. But when I say it's the dump trucks, I know that's going to be over soon, but it's not just the dump trucks. And it's not just the dump trucks that are driving 30, probably 40 miles an hour up and down the roads. It's not just that. And then not to mention all the golf carts that drive up there. I mean, three or four times I've seen the person driving the golf cart that's six years old with their parents sitting in the passenger seat steering it around the course. You know, and so, I mean, at some point, I don't know. I know it's hard. The police department only has just a limited amount of resources. I get that. But it's just, it's just terrible. And the accident that happened, I think, on the edge of Winter Garden in Oakland, somewhere over there with the golf cart. I mean, I totally see that happening, somebody getting hurt, or some big accident happening. So I appreciate you bringing that up because I sit there and watch it every single day. So just to know.
Thanks, Donna. Appreciate it. Anyone else? You know, also the topic of the forum, and we're going to show the consent agenda. And all that's listening tonight are the business, the 8/13, 24 Town Commission regular meeting. Approval of the Open Vision Zero Safety Act. Approval of the Oakland Avenue Charter School Safety and Security Requirements and the Reunification Plan. Approval of the Oakland Avenue Charter School Internet Policy. And the approval of dispatch agreement with Winter Garden PD. Anybody have any comments for the things or anything on this consent agenda? The only one I really had was in the Oakland Avenue Charter School Reunification Plan. It made a comment about if something happens, you know, they had to leave the school. They would go to a location that is unknown, just for bad actors. In case, you know, it's there. And it made a comment that just a couple of people know the location, not get it out. Assuming the press school is probably one of those. And don't anybody here in the town is the other, the chief.
People be aware of the man after it gets approved by commission. Yes.
Great. All right. Anybody else?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sorry, I forgot. It works on there too.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Wait a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. And then moving on to another policy matter this night is an appointment of Auditor Selection Committee. Is that you guys?
Yes. Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, so last meeting, I announced the town have to select a committee for the RFP, for the Financial Audit Committee or Selection Services, sorry. The town opened the seat for the residents through an application process, and we were seeking one applicant. We got several applications and we reviewed them all to ensure that they met the appropriate experience and knowledge. The statute states that the committee must be comprised of at least three members, one of which needs to be a member of the governing body and at least two members of the community. The Finance Department, to be completely honest, liked everybody's application. And all of them were selected because the more the merrier. And that would bring the selection committee to a total of six members, which also includes Mayor Taylor. And you would be leading the whole thing. So have fun with that. I am only in advisory capacity. So the Finance Department would like to formally appoint the following individuals to the Auditor Selection Committee. If these individuals are with us today, if you could please stand up so that the commission can see you. Steve Stanford, Kenneth Presnahan, Louis Carrua, Scott Gordon, and John P. Gogan.
Thank you, guys.
The RFP will officially close on Thursday. And then the selection committee will begin reviewing proposals, hopefully, the first or second week of September, depending on how many proposals we've officially received.
Are we setting a time to meet?
Yeah, so on Thursday, once I've seen how many we have, then I will reach out to all of the applicants and you as well, Mayor, and let you know what the plan is and give you any necessary information so that we can coordinate times and dates with everybody's schedule. We'll have to meet in person. Anybody that can't meet, I guess we can do it through Zoom. Maybe. I'm not sure. If not, it'll all be electronic. And then we'll just go from there. So.
Thank you. Do we need to officially appoint these people?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a note.
Go ahead. Okay, I was gonna say, I'll make the motion to accept the six members as relayed by plus the mayor be the leader selection committee.
All right, second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Hey, thank you, guys, for participating. Really, really good. Next is the health insurance provider change.
I'm fine. So the town is currently contracted with the Florida Municipal Interest Insurance Trust for all health benefits for fiscal year 2425. FMT presented the town with a 10% increase in employer benefits cost with the existing plan, which was previously adopted in the tentative budget presented to the town commission in June. In mid-July, the town was notified of an increase to the town's fire service agreement and therefore has since had to reexamine all expenditures to reduce the tentative mileage rate of 6.9. Our current town purchasing policy states that waiver 1.5, the town may, when deemed in its best interest and not inconsistent with law, waive any and/or all requirements or provisions set forth in this policy and proceed thereafter to take whatever action is deemed to be in the best interest of the town. So with that being said, on behalf of the town, Mullings Insurance Agency obtained quotes for the town from Florida Blue, Cigna, and Aetna. After reviewing the town's options, Florida Blue presented the best cost savings while still maintaining similar coverage for our employees. Mullings Insurance Agency has experienced in obtaining quotes for both public agencies and nonprofits. The comparison for proposed employer cost, Florida League, United Health, was 1,015,448 employer cost to Florida Blue's with Mullings as 883,956, which is a total employer cost savings of 131, a little over 131,000 dollars. The town would also be required to change dental coverage from Delta Dental to Principal Insurance and Vision Insurance from United Healthcare Spectra to Principal VSP. These are both employees' cost benefits. With the change in providers, you will see in the provided information that the coverage is comparable to past benefits and the cost is the same or less than current providers. So we are just recommending to change providers to help with the cost savings of the town.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We do have representatives involved here. Anybody from, anyone that's represented, like to speak tonight? No? Okay. Thank you. So the cost savings.
And that, and that's apples, the apples for saying.
Yeah, I believe Elise gave you guys all the packets, but the insurance coverage is, they did, it's pretty much the same. There is savings in both the dental and vision insurance also for the coverage for, that's simply cost. So.
Great. Okay. Anybody want to entertain with me?
I'm making a motion to approve the health. The change of the health.
Wait a second. Second, second by this fall there. Aye, aye. Okay. Thank you. All right, move right along. What's there? Outside of that, I'll keep moving forward and all again. So I'll have to see. Thank you for anything. Thank you. That's gonna be good.
Yeah, well, we are, we kind of the Lady Pocket exhibit.
Thanks. I'm gonna, Rick and I attended Friday night. It was a lot of people.
Yeah.
Like some tour showed out there. So, yeah, it's amazing. It's a good, it's a good exhibit. Really good exhibit. Check it out at the app already. Chief, or is walking talk Wednesday, if it's not raining? And I'll be glad to discuss the 260 foot back. I thought the office made it about six days. Can't get tomorrow, but we got them.
And where are you, where are you gonna be?
Riley. I'll start at Riley and walk until my shoe fall. To my wife and I will be there.
I was gonna say, is that gonna be a private and annual?
Thanks. Do you have anything, Dylan?
No.
Debbie, you said your piece, right?
I think so. Yes.
All right, so we'll bring it back to the table. Rick, where do you go?
I'll have your thing there.
You had a great week last week.
I'll be brief. Of course, when I went to the Florida League of Cities Conference, I just had like a couple of items that I looked at that I attended and some of the things I brought back. And I still owe just a presentation around engagement. This is how they usually have. They had two different apps. They had, they had an app and then it had a booklet. So we didn't get the documents, but I still got to get the presentation. So homelessness still issues statewide. Jacksonville is the only city that actually has an encampment. They paid, they spent $13 million to try to address the homeless issue. So it's, you know, I don't want to, you know, be repetitive, but it's still an issue. And, you know, that law goes in effect real soon as far as it relates to them being moved. And the police have to, you know, figure out what they're gonna, what's gonna happen with them if someone was to call and complain. Couple of things to Madonna Pike. I know this is all over the world. AI, AI is coming to municipal, it's already here. It's a good thing. It helped with coding, code enforcement, or, you know, just contracting. We just need to be on a lookout. AI is here to stay. And I just want to make sure that we do use it in a smart way. And I know the state legislator is going to start looking at that as well to ensure that we have good policy around that as relates to, you know, saving, you know, accurate information. But AI is going to be a hot topic coming up at the new year, New Year. Citizen engagement. I know we talked about it here. We had a great presentation. I believe Saul and I actually attended that same presentation. And that's the one I got to get adjusted. But it was a great presentation. And it talked about, you know, engaging citizens, you know, whether we do social media. Of course, some people have social media, we can't detect the email. It just really gave a good, comprehensive approach on how you need to make sure you're engaging your citizen in the best way. how you need to make sure you're engaging your citizen in the best way. And so, uh, uh, I want to get that presentation to Jessica to help what, you know, sharing information. But it has some very good tips. But it's really about getting it, the citizens involved. It also even talked about having special events. And, you know, we do a great job with the museum and especially events that we have, you know, give a, uh, a sense of community. And so that was really the main core of the presentation, uh, but, um, I, I gotta get that presentation. I apologize. Advocacy on a state level, talking about, um, you know, like some of the, you know, we was talking about the, uh, um, affordable housing, you know, they, uh, there's a lot of talk about making sure they're going to come up with all the policies and all the different challenges we may have, because there are a lot of new state legislators going to Tallahassee. Some come from local government, most don't. And so, uh, they're really just asking all cities and, um, you know, as, as, as many, uh, elected officials and citizens to be involved because they're as we know, there's a lot of changes going on in the country. There's a lot of changes in Tallahassee. And we just don't know what their thoughts are. But of course, we've been getting a lot of uh, legislative parties has been pushed down to, uh, so legislative, uh, uh, agendas have been pushed down to the cities and, and the towns and villages. And just like the homelessness, you know, you know, we, there's no budget for it. So just looking out, uh, uh, on that, affordable housing, it was an issue, it was a, a, a concern. Again, uh, there's several cities and, uh, towns, of course, you know, we had, you know, we signed our, uh, ordinance last week and, um, we don't have that much land, but there's some cities that are really, uh, with, uh, that issue. Of course, we want to make sure we have affordable housing, we want to, for uh, uh, um, our workers in the state. But, um, how that's going to happen, how it's going to be implemented, that's being sent to us from Tallahassee. Um, there's a lot of discussion around there. So, uh, Elise and, um, uh, Andy, you know, please don't look out for that communication, because that's going to start coming down real soon. And it was great to, to get the Florida League of Cities, a war for the nature preserve. Again, it was a lot of attention. And, um, just want to say close down again. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Thanks, dude.
Yes, awesome. Just to add on to the part of the League of Cities meeting, um, this is, uh, comes from Commissioner Ramos, actually, but he's not here. It's his birthday. Uh, and his wife is taking him out to some wonderful dinner. So congratulations to him. So, yeah, I had a stop from public. Um, anyway, he ran into a fellow working from the Florida League of Cities, the town's, uh, Harmer. It was a management associate for, um, lives in Oakland Park and would consult our charter review committee for free when we're ready. So, which is just huge for us. He mentioned in the class, uh, many towns and cities that is mandatory, of course, to do the charter review every ten years to bring it to the commission to approve any changes. And some of the suggested talents being familiar with context, global work articles and boilerplates. And, um, this fellow, I've got his card that I'll probably give either Elise to you or, or to Andy, whichever one you know, wants it to, that we reach out to him. I don't know where we're at with the charter review committee, but there's someone that will give us some, uh, some free help. Uh, he wanted that conveyed. Also, what I wanted to, um, just add in is South did, um, finish his commitment on all the election stuff and the money he had left over. He did, uh, donate to both the preserve and to the Oakland Avenue Charter School, a thousand dollars each, which he had said that's what he was going to do. Um, the school, if you look at the front of the school, they use it for landscaping at the front of the school. So, uh, nature preserve, whatever you, you said, you did, but I just want to make sure that, that we did get that out there, that he did donate that money.
Thank you. Got it? That's right. I got a few things here. Um, the, uh, town received, uh, notice, I think it was last Friday, for the resignation of the town attorney. So town staff is going to begin an R U process for a replacement, uh, on that. We'll be out with that. And, uh, when that comes out. Uh, also, just to keep on your radar, there's been some discussions going back and forth on, uh, utilizing the school parking lot as public parking on weekends or maybe when schools are in session or, um, you know, perfect routes, uh, you know, there's, there's parking issues that are happening at Lakeside, we talked that, that kind of needs to be more of a group with Lakeside and its residents. So, uh, if the parking lot is being used on weekends or maybe a, 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 an opportunity to utilize the, uh, school parking lot. It's not beating there. The only caveat I would have on that is just not allowing any type of overhead parking or anything at the school.
Um, the, the other thing to just add in is, um, it's got to be outside of the gate on the, um, on the concrete. So at this point, if we open it up, that kind of opens up the hardening of the school. That's where it's all hardened. That's, we need to be careful of that also.
True.
Would that resolve the issue that resident wrote in about?
That's what we're trying to look at some avenues there to. By the way, he's been speaking with, with her, um, as well. So he's, uh, trying to get it done as quick as possible. Uh, I know that.
I mean, it's enough space in there that the cars wouldn't have to.
You know, so I, I tend that Lakeside, uh, third. And I know that when I go, uh, at the nine o'clock service, uh, it, it is, there is a lot of cars that pull into that, off the area. Um, looking at the amount of cars that are there, it would probably fill up the parking lot and that's um, they have a few, you know, uh, not, not having spaces. It just all depends. I do know that the church is, uh, looking at adding an extra service. So maybe that will that will either, you know, one of two things, it will either, it will either decrease the parking or it will increase. It will be four times a day instead of a Sunday instead of three times a Sunday. Issues. So, um, but the town is, is trying to work on, on something to, to, to help with that. Um, also, I've been, uh, been getting calls and texts and emails from town residents about, uh, everybody's starting to receive your return notices in the mail for your property taxes. And, right, there's just, keep in mind that when you look at that number, that is the worst case scenario as we, um, uh, looked at, um, back in June, July?
July.
July, when we had to set that mileage rate because of the Orange County Fire, uh, increase. Uh, so that was a worst case scenario. So, uh, as, as we go, the town staff has been looking at ways to try to bring that down. But you know, now, like today, just showed one example. There was a hundred and thirty thousand dollar savings right there, probably that we're working on. So there's other avenues that we're looking at. Um, it, you know, we're all residents here. We don't want to have to pay if we don't have to. So, um, you know, we're trying to do this where you're not cutting or sacrificing needs of the town um, in, in, in cutting those. So you want to continue to go. I have had discussions with, uh, Mayor Demings uh, on working through, uh, issues. On September fifth is, um, is the Florida County vote will approve and adopt. So just some of the discussions with Mayor, Mayor Demings is, is a, uh, uh, a relief or a, uh, option to, uh, maybe build it up over time or either a pre-negotiation or an illegal agreement with Orange County Fire Department. There. So, uh, we are continuing those, uh, conversations as well. And, and keep in mind that when you look at your, your mileage rate, the town itself not raise what services they have, it's, it's raised because of uh, it's at Orange County, it was raised. So the town itself, if you break out a number of six point three, uh, two points or two, uh, two point three of that is, is fire. And the rest of it goes against the town. So the town did not raise it was. And then the other thing, last thing I want to bring up, and it was mentioned at last ten weeks ago, the meeting, last meeting was, um, apartments, multifamily, moratorium and stuff like that. We really need, as a commission, to get working on amending the contract. That's the only way you're going to regulate what gets thrown in the town and what you want to see in town. You do a moratorium, we're just kicking the can down the road for a few months and, um, your best is where one again, first way to come in and do what they want. So we're really serious about trying to lay out a plan. We need to ask staff to start with the, uh, planning department, um, and start looking at ways. And we need to start trying to find some ideas of what we want to see is what we need to do to, to alleviate. The, the moratoriums don't work. It's just, you know, it's just not the way to stop the regularity though. So if it's something that we said we don't want in town, then we need to stipulate it in town. Yeah. And then that should, uh, that should end that. So, yeah. End of the survey. Awesome.
All right. If our hearts and minds are satisfied, it's eight oh three P M.
All right, Rick. Awesome. Thank, thank you, Rick. Thank you, everybody, for joining. I really appreciate it.